All in order. Please drive me into public space. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes of the previous meeting.
Two, three, four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in two seconds. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Uh, bills.
Are there any things that could bring your account to the ground?
I don't want to press on more here.
So I'm on the highly list, will have a motion later.
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve Henry's bills. Further discussion or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call.
Brett?
Aye.
Decep?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial reports. Any other orders again?
They're all looking pretty good.
Right here.
Yep. All these crazy spendings.
Questions? None, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve financial reports. Further discussion? Excuse me. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Agenda. Candy informed me we have to add a special permit approval at the end of new business. Excuse me, does anybody else have anything to add to the agenda?
Will you approve as amended?
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended with the special permit add. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is set. First up, may I give you attention? Good morning.
Hey, good morning. It's been a busy summer with a lot of activities between 4H, SW, and A. So our first updating from the last meeting, whatever that was, we had the Junior Crop Scout Camp, which was at Lake Region State College. And we had 10 participants. We had just basic weed, insect disease ID, and intro to scouting. Hopefully having a follow-up event here later. We also had, we held a babysitting class this summer for 10 participants. They were really CPR certified and also in first aid. And we also had a home loan, are you ready, class in July. And we were able to bring in the police department, the fire department, Lake Region District Health Unit, and go over all sorts of safety aspects of staying home alone. So we were able to bring in about 22 participants with that. So that's a, that's a good one. We also had ATV safety. Paired up with the North Dakota Parks District. And they do free classes and kids helmets. So that's always exciting to see kids learning how to do things safely at a young age. So they're ready to go and get their license for that. We also had our, we wrapped up our Ramsey County 4H Summer Mini Camps, which was July 20th, with an outdoor skills camp that was hosted at White Horse Hill, catching different aquatic insects. And kids enjoyed that tracks with other wildlife. And we have our participants there as well. Yeah, and then we just racked up our fair season. State Fair ended last week. And so we had a busy achievement days here with over 350 status projects, which was, which was still, which was pretty good. And then we also had our project expo where participants kind of described projects and communication skills and whatnot. And then we just wrapped up last week with the North Dakota State Fair. We had over 173 status projects displayed there. We had our livestock, which included beef, sheep, pigs, and rabbits brought from the county. For our communication arts, we had three presentations and five participants. Project Expo, four participants. Holding Review, four participants. Horses, we had eight participants bringing home 34 awards.
I know.
We were busy. Oh my goodness, I can't believe it. We had, overall, we had six grand champions. And if we add the horses, we'll have 14 total. Reserve grand champions, we have two. And out with the horse events, we have the 11 total. Four awards of excellence. And Ramsey County also received the County Herdsman Award, which is presented to a 4H club of being the best herdsman within each species. That's a great first teamist award. You're no more swirled herdsman.
You know the 350 projects that we did and then 173 that state has done because of all the clover bugs?
You're exactly right. Yeah, the clover bugs take a percentage of our projects. Simply because there's really no limit.
Right, yeah.
Which is, yep, you're exactly right. Our next, the kind of our, my follow-up event from the Junior Crop Scout Camp is our field day next week at Langton. We have seven kids signed up. So we're gonna just kind of get them through the, in the field, basically the three hours and look at things and have them fill out their crop scout sheet. It'll be exciting to see how much they learn in routine.
Yeah, and then we're gonna kind of wrap up our, our summer 4H with the Family Fun Night. That's coming up on August 11th at 6:30. We actually rented the pool. So the kids will be able to swim, we'll do awards. And then this is kind of our, kind of promoted to families that are interested in joining 4H. So they're welcome to, to join in that event as well. So it's kind of just a fun kickstart to the new year.
When is that?
It is, yep, August 11th.
Starts at 6:30.
Kids will have a food and awards and then we'll open this morning. And then one thing, or, yeah, does anybody have any questions?
No, my comments are very good at State Fair, I know that. It's a lot of projects.
There were some families that stayed the whole week.
Yes.
I don't know how they do it.
Hughes' might have got a little shorter time.
A lot of family bonding, right?
A lot of bonding, yeah.
State 4H Shooting Sport should be, shotgun should be wrapping up this, is it next week?
That is coming up, yes. I know Cindy's been working hard on getting all the flights scheduled and whatnot. So, yeah, so that, that is coming up. I think Ramsey County is bringing probably about half of the participants. Yep, yep. So they've been working hard also on shooting and. Oh, one thing that we, but we've kind of talked about too is, just kind of wanted to put a bug in your ear, about, we had some cooking classes downstairs in the large meeting room. We actually brought in from CMS some kids before their exploratories. Gosh, what did, did we bring in about 40 kids? Yep, and two flights. And lots of dishes happening. So there's no dishwasher downstairs. We did kind of talk to Roger a little bit and he said there might be a location for a dishwasher. Just kind of looking at maybe like the food safety aspect of keeping everything clean. The water doesn't get very warm to wash the dishes. So I don't know if that's something that we could ever possibly get downstairs. As we're kind of picking up in more face-to-face programming post-COVID, that, things like that are starting to happen. So that might be something that might not be a bad idea downstairs.
Where could you put it?
There actually, there is an opening right underneath one of the countertops.
I think it's near the sink. There, on this wall.
So, I mean, if it's something Roger could investigate a little bit more or.
Right, doing the stove and.
Exactly, yep.
Let's look into it. Well, Roger, thanks for bringing it here. He's my, my partner. I'll talk to him later.
Be a good idea, I think.
Alrighty, any questions for extension? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Alright, next up, Scott from the airport. Welcome.
I don't know what you guys want to hear. I think I'll have coffee. Is there any questions on it or? I do have a couple of updates. We just recently got our insurance bills from the agent. And they're, they've increased by about $300 more than I had in the budget originally. That's gonna put us a little deeper in debt there.
And we went through, as an airport board, we went through and adjusted last week. And we thought everything will fit. Try and keep costs low as, as we continue to move through our expansion projects in the next couple of years.
Go ahead, go ahead, we did the expansion project?
Yeah, they're, they're set to be bidding here now in the next month and a half. I think we'll be putting it out for bids. So everything's moving forward pretty well. Everything except the cost.
Like everything else, we've experienced a cost increase. Some of the bid projects that we had, was there one this summer that's been, it was just not higher than what we had originally expected?
We had a taxiway apron improvement project going that the engineers estimated around 1.7 million and the bids came in at 3.1 million. And so that cuts your, you know, your funding quick. And they had, like our terminal expansion, we were, while the RFSR building we were planning on doing, they were figuring right around $250 to $300 a square foot for that building. And they just compared it to a school they built in West Fargo, which came in at $525 a square foot. So costs are huge and we think we're gonna end up cutting some of our projects due to that. So today's environment isn't good for construction.
Was there any grants involved in that?
Yeah, this is all CARES grants. We had, we received $16.28 million CARES grant, which we have to have spent by July of 2024. And that's where these, the money's coming from for our terminal project and the other ones that we have. But unfortunately, we think we're gonna run short. And that's 100% matching, 100% funding, no matching funds on that. So that was a real booster here for to be able to do some of this stuff. Pretty thankful for what we got.
Right.
It was a, it was a calculation error on the FAA's part, however they calculated this. Otherwise we probably would have got, what, I think it was like $160,000 or something like that. And we ended up getting $16.28 million, so wow.
I mean, no, we're not gonna complain, but it sounds like they need the help.
And then they waited, they waited almost 14 months to decide how we could spend it, if we were gonna get the key, you know, and stuff like that. But they didn't extend our, our time period to spend that we still have. Now we're down to almost less than three years to get it done. It's a big rush out there to get all this stuff accomplished by that time.
And we can't go without thanking Scott and our board and Mr. Olson, Dennis back there. They've done an awful lot of work and set up and in the midst of all this money coming in and the projects going on and switch over from managers and things like that. So, but Scott has done a tremendous job as well as Dennis and spent an awful lot of time out there. And so can't thank them both enough.
Did we got any questions on anything or questions? Hearing none. Thanks, Scott.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Water Resource District.
Good morning.
Morning.
Not too many changes for us, I guess. Basically, our office staff, of course, as you guys know, we're just down to the one. Kenzie is assisting when needed. But other than that, everything is pretty consistent. Like, of course, our payroll taxes go down. We are looking to actually suspend our Starkweather Cooley assessment. So up on the top at the Stark, the Starkweather Cavalier County, that will probably be removed. We had a joint board meeting last week just due to the funds that we have in our Starkweather Cooley account. We're thinking of suspending it for one year, the assessments. Other than that, there hasn't, there aren't too many changes from last year.
Okay, questions? Everyone looks pretty straightforward. Any questions? Sorry, I'm reading.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
Looks good. Thanks, Stacy, we appreciate it. Alrighty. Mr. Grager, morning.
Good morning. So I come to be good at this on behalf of the Lake Region UAS team. I know back in November, you guys funded the project for some operational costs back in, at November. So we decided on, I know it was, it was voted to buy some products and some items, but we decided to hold off due to inflation being astronomical and some of that stuff. So I'm just looking for the commission to keep funding the drone team and to make it a, an account where we can just keep building it. Because then we can, whatever we save, we can use for the future to buy into new products as these other projects, products take over.
Steve talked to me about some batteries that we need, is that right?
Actually just purchased some batteries. We probably need more.
Is that like, is that like a lithium battery then?
Yeah. Expensive, one little battery was $700 and it takes two to take off. Yeah. And as we keep progressing, the age of our aircraft has to be.
Right.
The new ones are even worse currently.
Right now, this one's doing the purpose, right?
What's that?
This one's doing the purpose that we need right now, right?
Absolutely. Yep.
And we own this ourselves now, Callie, yeah?
Yep. Yeah, we have three aircraft in the fleet. One was the very original one, which is, is at its end of life. That is end of life. That was purchased along with Dustin, seven years ago.
No, longer than that.
Okay, longer than seven years ago, it's way past end of life. And we now have two operational, fully operational drones. One heavy wind and one light wind.
And they're being utilized all the time, talking with Steve and Chris on that. And they're really being well utilized and I just sit and collect the dust. So I think it'd be an important item to continue in our budget process and keep in there. And hopefully that, that line item can grow and have some sort of reserve. So like big projects or big purchases need to be made, the money is not available or readily available for them. Because I think those drones are upwards of $25,000 to $40,000 for anyone.
The one we're looking at now that would work in most North Dakota winds is up to $75,000.
$75,000.
Yeah. But it's got the longest flight time it can blast in the wind. And just talking about how often we've been utilized, we have over 185 hours of mission. 100 and over 150 safe landings and hazardous times and conditions.
So is there any trades other than the ones that we have?
Sadly, that's the tough part.
It's like going to work on cars. Kind of like a bullet or something.
Yeah. They become training, like the, the original one that was purchased a long time ago is now a new training drone. It has some of the capabilities you can train with. So that's a nice place.
You train on stuff so if, if you're learning and something bad happens, you're really cheap.
Yeah, we learned how to really quick earlier this year.
My question would be, you know, are we gonna delineate it as a separate line? Or do we want to put it in somebody's budget, you know, like the sheriff's department's budget as a line item? Or, I would assume? Or how, how do we want to handle it?
What do you think, Andy?
Well, I think if you want to continue to build it, then you're gonna have to not make it a general fund account. Because if you don't, if you don't spend, you know, if you don't spend at the end of the year, it all goes back into.
How do, how do we go about making it not a general fund account?
Um, that's just me setting up an account.
Just don't.
Do we have one of these for it? We don't have two. We don't have a line item.
How much did we, did we put into it in November, October?
13, 15,000.
Yeah, I've been using it for fuel to, in the community unit to operate and.
And that's not a good reason.
That wouldn't be for repair of like a battery or anything that we need some above or below that.
Well, that's what the account's currently been used for. We really held back on purchasing computers, which was our big, it was a big expense. They were so marked up, even Steve's still looking at computers, it's a line number. I don't think it comes, yeah, I don't think it will. I hope it does.
Did either of you include this into your budget for next year?
I did not, because I wanted to talk about this straightforward with you guys.
So what kind of, what kind of dollar figure are we thinking on a yearly basis right now?
What do you think, Dustin? Five, 5,000? It'll take a long time to build for, for upgrading. If we look at the low number, I mean, if you can, and, you know, at the end of the, end of the day, if it all becomes unusable, it just goes to next year. You know, and if we have a huge surplus, like, it can be moved off to the sheriff's office or something else for purchase. Or back to the general for that amount.
These drones we, we have now, how were they acquired? Did we have grant funding?
The one we bought was ARPA.
ARPA, yeah, that's right.
We used that for ARPA last spring, I think. And then the city bought the second one.
Okay, okay, yeah.
And the first one is the one that was initially bought by the four different agencies. And was grabbed, then we had it repaired, that's the third one. And I think the city bought theirs in ARPA funds, too.
So it's been pretty much all local dollars that have paid for everything.
So far, yeah.
There's not grant funding out there or anything like that for these kind of things?
Grants don't cover drones, that's the hard part.
I, I take some of that first ARPA money and start this fund.
The, the original 15 came from COVID funds. Yeah.
So the emergency manager is in a separate budget, he's not, he's not under general. So we can stick it under emergency management, probably would make. I just figured you don't need a separate delineate, or a separate line, a separate page. You can just put it on.
Right.
Under somebody's budget, just so there's oversight on the dollars more than anything, I think.
Absolutely.
Well, it's not over that some accounts, so they need to.
How much do we left on the 15, Tom?
What's that?
How much do you left on the 15?
I did not check that. I'm guessing probably close to 12,000. I mean, there's quite a bit, we haven't spent really anything.
Yeah, you're just trying to, you're just trying to build and, yeah, which is reasonable.
To maintain in the future is what you're looking at.
Yep, maintain your drones, that's true.
Make sure we get it on this year's, or the budget for next year, so we can keep building. That's reasonable.
So basically, right now, you're looking at that 5,000, 7,500?
I was, I was hoping closer to 10 because of the, the, we'll, we'll need a new drone before we ever find that, gets that money amount. And hopefully in the future, there will be something more available for us.
That's something everybody can do, that's what the whole community is in.
I've been as far out as I've been.
We were even on standby for Grand Forks at one point here earlier, last month.
Last month?
No, I mean, we're, it's been utilized. And that's, and that's a great tool and we need to keep it. That's my opinion on it.
That's what you were taking pictures with during the flood, right?
Yep. That was actually amazing, Steve was super proud of that for Clay. It's great when you look at a picture from standing 10 feet from it versus.
It was a great capability for us and for Kevin to be able to present some of that stuff.
All those pictures go on.
And the more we have it, the more you realize what we can use it for. There's other things that we can use it for that just, you know, what we use it for. I mean, like I said, the flood's a perfect example. Or if we have a severe storm, we can do some reporting.
Even if you were searching for a lost person or something.
I, I think that's worth it. I mean, going around the other stuff is valuable, but I think that's really huge value. Because if you're in a situation where it's dangerous or something, you can send a drone out, stay where it's safe and you can go look for a survivor or somebody and not put one of our sponsors in, in a tough situation, having to look for people. More like, say, going to look for damage or something on drones or almost anything, it's really valuable.
And actually assisting out at Spirit Lake, we've used it several times to, of course, it has to be written into a search warrant, which has been granted every time. But we'll send the drone in if we're looking. They've had a couple of murder suspects out there that we've, the FBI's been looking for. So we'll send the drone in and actually fly the house. Looking in the windows, see if we can see where they are, kind of see what they're at. So we aren't jeopardizing any person, you know, they're still a half mile away. The drone can actually go and sit and hover there and look in windows and kind of give us a, you know, so I mean, there's a lot of valuable opportunities to use this thing to keep the safety issue for our.
I'll keep that in mind.
It has to be done with a search warrant and it has to be signed by others. So we can't do that to anybody. It has to be legitimate and it has to be done before we can do it.
Put some more curtain down.
The rules are very restrictive after years, so.
You know, it's a very useful tool. You know, round this lake, probably get some trouble out there and we got six or eight foot waves out there. We don't want to put you in jeopardy and send this out there and put those in the drink, well.
But see, the rules are so restrictive, we couldn't even fly it at that, the night out thing in the night because it's a no-fly zone. So we're not allowed to fly it. Yep, we're in the airport purview, so you can't fly it. So we had to, you just sit there and, we couldn't even fly it around the parking lot because of the rules.
It's something we are working on, though. You have to get special exemptions from the FAA. Do you bet? And it will be coming, it just, it's the FAA.
They kind of don't have, yeah.
Well, like I said, we're, we're following the rules specifically as we, and we have to. And there is no anything below board if anybody questions it. I mean, it's all done as per the rules we have to follow with the FAA and their sort of, all of their total laws, so.
There's a piece of equipment the whole community can do with.
Absolutely.
Food's going to benefit that.
Absolutely.
ARPA money or COVID money.
We still got money, so that first COVID fund, so. Candy said that it probably makes the most sense to set it up under its own line item just for higher accounting purposes. So if we're fine with that, that's.
Basically looking for a motion on how much?
Yes, that would be, how much and if we're gonna do it that.
How much in a separate line item?
Throw a number out, yeah?
Throw, throw a number out?
30?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Let's, I'll do a motion for 30,000 on a separate line item for the drone program. Let's, I'll do a motion for thirty thousand on a separate line item for the the drone program.
Okay. And we have a second. Do we want to include in that motion that we rolled the dollars we've already appropriated over into that same line item? Or does that matter? We'll just do that immediately anyway?
I'll just, I'll do a letter of transfer.
Okay, and then we can just do, then we can just do that, that's just so we're making sure the accounting properly for the auditing purposes, so just so we make sure we're doing it right, so. Okay, that'll be just fine. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to take thirty thousand dollars of the initial COVID funds that we still have sitting and, uh, develop a separate line item for going forward for drone funding. Drone, well, I don't know what the technical name is.
Lake Region UAS team.
Lake, Lake Region UAS team, okay. Further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Good, thank you. Hey, Sheriff, you're up. You don't know why you're here?
Well, I think I'm here because of the task force.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's why I was initially.
Yeah, Candy, Candy is informed, we have, yeah, we've talked.
Um, so I guess I'm just here to answer any questions about what's going on or what needs to be done, or. Well, currently, the city of Devils Lake, since we initially started this, the city had half of the first employee, we only started with one. So the city had the majority of that employee, we paid the other half along with the other colonies. Well, since we've increased and grown, now we have one and a half, and the city has one, and then the other colonies have the other half. So the city initially was set up to cover all the grant money, and they were doing great. Well, when things changed over there, things kinda got really, uh, leveled. So, since we have the vast majority of the personnel, we thought it was our best effort for Ramsey County to take over managing the grant from the task force. So basically, right now, I think my line item this last year was ninety-five thousand, we just paid, we write a check to the city for whatever they, you know, I think it's ninety, was it ninety-two?
Yeah, it was ninety.
Ninety, so let me write a city, and then every month, they bill us, we bill them back for wages, they pay us back, and.
So this this task force, when the guard was helping, was that part of this ninety-five thousand, or were they paying that?
No, no, the guard was just basically giving that as a as a free.
So we don't get that anymore?
We haven't had one of those for a couple of years.
So is that?
They were basically.
The question, the only reason I'm asking is I see mine is Mark Fargo.
They might have it.
They still have it, because we, I see the applications come through.
Okay.
Is there something that we have to apply for for that, or is that not a good, I mean?
I can sure check with your house.
But you know what I'm saying?
I know exactly.
Was that a good thing?
They they were, they basically had analysts, uh, when they came, they were named, they were, that was their profession in there.
And that wasn't costing us anything, right?
No, the guard was just assigned them to the task force for a period of time, and then when those people moved on, it just kinda, then if they had another one move in that had time, they sent another one in, uh.
The reason I ask is, well, they're having trouble getting people to do it in Bismarck, maybe they could move that here?
If we could, that'd be great, yeah, the more we can get for.
I think some of the question that you probably should ask.
Yeah, we'll have to get a little.
Because if they're allowing it there, I imagine if you don't ask, you're not gonna get, that's the only thing.
And I think it's been a couple of years, so it's probably off their radar again, you know, so they aren't thinking about it, but before it was kinda fresh, they, we got a guy we can send over, so we'll revisit that here.
Yeah, because it's help for you.
Oh, it's 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 free, absolutely, and then they can, they kinda did, they could glamour and did all the statistical stuff, and all the, some of the information, a lot of the information gathering. We're, you know, putting it together, and so it did help.
Yeah, because I think you get a head of, like, you had someone on for like three years.
It was two or three years, yeah, well, it was summer, it was basically.
Yep, but still.
Six or eight months of time, but it was still, that was very valuable, very, it helped. So we'll check into that again.
I think the federally funded stuff is still there for that, I think.
Yeah, that didn't cost, I don't, I mean, that didn't cost us anything, that was just the guard giving up the person for, you know, to assist us. Yeah.
I think we can ask and then go from there.
Yep.
That's the worst, that's the worst thing that happened.
No, it's okay, but anyway, uh, the the grant, basically, it's just a pass-through. Um, so we'll stay with the colonies that are, the other four colonies that are involved, or we'll just pay us to pay the half of ours. You know what I mean, so instead of paying the city, they'll just be paying, that's about basically.
Basically, the city's gonna pay us now to, we're just gonna, they're just gonna keep their own.
No, the city, the city can keep their own employee, and they can pay him on their own, because they have a whole move. So we'll have our two, our one and a half plus, uh.
Plus the other half.
And then the rest is just managing the grant money, which is like I said, basically a pass-through, so it's just kind of an accounting thing. Uh, they'll keep track of the seizure money, they'll keep that separate, you know, anything that is awarded to us for drug seizure money. And I think there's like forty thousand in that account that we're, we found. And then I hope they found, they lost it for a while, but I think we found it now. So, anyway.
Well, I think we used to do a miscellaneous for it.
Yes.
Then we change it to a different number.
Something like that, but anyway, that that forfeiture money has to be accounted for separately.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that had to do with, yeah, I remember that, you made a change.
If you remember, the legislature, yeah, the legislature made a change in forfeiture stuff.
Yeah.
So we just have to come for it separately. But other than that, it's basically just, when they get this, they call the heroin grant, because that's basically what they're doing. When they get that, that's just money here, and then all you, we have to pay it out, then we request, they pay it back, and it's just a pass-through. And then we have to do some accounting and some bookwork to keep the state happy as, for like next year's grant funding and so forth and so on.
Well, you know, Candy's all right with it?
It's a bit of work, it's.
I already signed the papers.
Well, you don't need our approval then.
Well, at the end of the day, I think we almost have to, because if it's grant funding, we gotta make sure from our perspective, we have to keep the drug task force going, so we gotta make sure we do it right.
And that's what the problem is, we're having some trouble with the fund, with the paperwork to get back to Bismarck. So we can qualify for the grant next year, and that grant gives us a lot of things, I tell ya, it's. Yeah, so they bought two to equip, two trucks with it, uh, they got overtime money to to utilize for the guys with the grant money, that's zero match. You know, so it's it's important that we keep that grant funding available.
Uh, it's unfortunate that, you know, in a perfect world, we wouldn't need a drug task force, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, we are very much in need of it, I'm sure you guys are all well aware of that.
Is it large enough?
What's that?
The task force, you got enough people?
Right now, I think we're, well, I will never say it's not big enough, but, uh, see, right now, we're, we have three, plus now they they took that Stell down. Was the city employee, well, he got hired on by the VIA, so he left, he's now employed by the VIA, but he's assigned to our task force. Uh, uh, for the Lake Region Task Force, so he, we actually, we got an extra body there. So we got our three, the city, plus our one and a half, and, you know, plus now Stella's back, uh, with the VIA helping us, so we actually have that extra, and let's just kinda see where that goes. He's assigned to kind of the, an area, he's not just here, he's got like four co- uh, uh, Phil Mountain, and I think he goes a little bit down the river. But he's primarily stationed here, so. So I think we're doing okay at this point, but maybe next year or the year after, we might have to look at that again, but.
Well, like I said, if you've got that guard personnel.
And that guard, or that just takes paperwork away from our guys, so we have more time to do their other things, so.
Yeah, just checking it out.
Maybe four and a half or five, depending on how much time we get out of it.
If you're having some trouble with that, I mean, I don't wanna know contact.
Okay.
But I'd rather have you go through it.
Yeah, we'll start, we'll start at them.
Just give me a call, and I'll ask a question.
We need a, a motion for the county to go ahead with that task force.
Probably should have, except for, I'm managing the grant funding.
I'll still move the motion. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to, uh, have us take over the accounting and management of the grant funding and, uh, for the, for the task force for the Ramsey County portion as well as the other counties portion. Devils Lake will continue on, and I don't want further single individual then. Okay, further discussion?
Along with that, just just so you're aware, we're probably gonna have to issue our two guys', uh, gas cards.
Yeah.
But then that's all re, that's all re, again, that's again, that's all refunded through back to the grant. But, uh, just one of those things.
Or we'll do it there, now we have to do it on our center.
Yeah, so it's just us doing it our.
Um, well.
Travis is gonna.
I don't know, he goes.
Yep.
Okay, further questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Is there something else on page sixteen that I need the? I don't know, address, as long as I'm here.
I think she just put you down because.
Well, the task force is a big thing, I mean, as I said, it's, it's involved with that a little bit, it's kinda, you know, there's a lot of things going on, a lot of bigger moving. I mean, this year, uh, Williston put in for a whole bunch and didn't use it, so we were able to take, they gifted more back to us, which was helpful for us, which is, yeah. So I mean, that that grant is so important, and that's why we need to make sure it's viable, and and we're getting it done, because.
That's okay, I mean, just.
Definitely.
Drug money not all out yet.
No, and that's where all those statistics come into play, because, okay, you're doing this many, take a big, oh, shoot, they're busy, they need somewhere else. We bought a lot of equipment from that grant, and it's it's huge, so we need to keep it up and running, and that's kinda why we decided to come this way with it.
Absolutely, that's fine.
Thanks, Peter. No, she had it written down because she had, just because that was the drug task force number with that.
Oh, okay.
It was on that page.
I just wanna make sure, just, I'm here.
So, so we had to, and she had to move it up just a little bit because of the, yeah, so it's one oh six five instead of that ninety-five, you know, just because of the.
I I've heard there's a couple rulings about some of my salary things, is that something you wanted to address, or?
No question. Oh, that, I thought that was an answer.
Okay, you know, just wanna make sure there I can explain if I have to, like, what we did and why, but.
In your department?
In my department, yeah. Okay, I'm just making sure.
You're good.
I know you guys got a lot of things going on right now, a lot of.
There's nothing, nothing going on, right?
Financial questions that have to be answered, and Kevin isn't even in here yet, so. He's kind of stuck all the money.
All right, okay, further questions?
Thank you, take care.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. All right, yeah, all right, of course. I think I'll start off with code updates, um, we, uh, got all the lines painted on our Pepsil project and the repaying work we were getting done, so that's all that's on. They got the career road all gravel, we still got gravel projects out there on Ramsey Four, South of Doyan, ten by Norriski, and I guess that's it, we can't go one south to Church and Berry, because that one underwater.
Went back to where the bridges are, I don't want it underwater again.
Yeah, like south of the bridge, right down by Thompson, yeah, that one underwater again.
Bridge, is the bridge underwater again?
The bridge, well, just by the deck, you know, it's not a long stretch, it's a short stretch, but it is underwater.
A ten thousand dollar, I think, but that was, yeah, we both bet. We didn't have a choice, but still, it's just frustrating.
I do like four feet of water down, you know.
Yeah, really, exactly. Uh, what else we got going, uh, we got the new in our soft spots, uh, again, our soft spots, we're gonna start putting culverts in ourselves this month, in a couple of weeks. We got five feet of new, we tried to see that one harvest going on, so that's why it's scheduled for that time period. And then Ramsey two, I'll let Paul, or Ramsey three by Panda, I'll let Paul probably look at one.
Okay, uh, they got the scraping on yesterday, they got the crash locks in today. They got gravelly approaches this week, and they're, each day, Saturday, so it's a good thing they're wrapping things up. Um, there'll be one item award after completion date, it's just seeding around those eighty-eight ramps at the intersections, so that's, but it won't affect traffic, so we won't have to turn LBS for that. And it's outside the seeding window, so I wanted to push it up, push it out. They can't put seed in between, uh, I can remember one day in July, but it ends August tenth, so it'll be a few days after the completion date for the Quebecian to finish that. Um, quantity wise, we didn't create a budget on that, um, but they have compacting incentives, um, it was about thirty-three thousand for the longitudinal joint density and the kind of pave it, it's paved in itself for the overlay, so that was about thirty-two thousand, thirty-two six, I think, and then, um, they opted into the fuel cost adjustment. And they got another fifty thousand for that, so the ARPA will over on a little bit, it's under on the quantities, but it's been with those two things that are in addition to the bid price, so we'll be let it over, um, when it's all done. But the connection incentive means you're getting a better product too, so I guess for that, fuel cost adjustment, obviously, we'll need control over that. But things turned out good, and looking forward to wrapping that one up. Um, and Ramsey County four, I'm glad we got the permit from the board for that, um, last month here, so we should all get that up a bit shortly. For construction next year.
So any questions on the projects we got going on, before we move on?
That bridge up there at four, that's next year, right?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if you remember, only started planning that, but that, a bridge project takes years to get through.
Well, I was, it had to do with wanting to get that, this year, those prefab boxes we couldn't get.
Right, right.
Getting, getting very done, so.
And the environmental part held it up too, so.
We got a pretty guaranteed that prefab box is gonna be there next year, can you use, can we do here?
Yeah, once we go to bid, then they'll have a deadline date, but, you know, we'll, we'll set the deadline date in our bid, but, yeah. It'll be up to them, that, uh.
Also maybe buy the box.
Right, right.
They probably have a little bit more core.
Well, it's only one of the suppliers that paints some of this, that's built in indoor, so it'll be two, so they'll make it through the winter, like the doors all cast outside.
Oh, interesting.
It looks all right now for this season, I mean, and then for the winter, what's up there for the fall race?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a little rough, but it, I mean, you can still go sixty miles an hour.
It'll make a tough spring. It'll make a tough spring.
It's, it's a low tonnage bridge, it's only like fifteen tons or something like that, but.
Well, the main prob, yeah, the main problem on it's always been it's got that wood deck on it, and then you put pavement on it, and then it shifts, and then the pavement cracks up, and it's just always rougher than a cob, I mean.
The wood out there.
Yeah.
Not a good deal, no.
No, it's, it's got wood, uh, timber end walls and side walls, and, yeah.
You can imagine the pipes are shitting all the time in the asphalt on top, but just.
We feel safe for the season, the drone is, next year?
Yeah.
It'll be okay for a long time.
It hasn't changed.
I'm worried you're gonna get asked a question, though.
Yeah.
We feel safe.
It hasn't changed just in the last few years, I mean, they should have, we crossed it with over fifteen tons, we all know they do, but nothing going on for ten years.
Right.
Well, and it's a short bridge too, so you don't ever have a whole truck on it either, it's just axles here. Worst thing that happens is you drop a couple axles and be.
All just the back guy. Should we slow the traffic down over that thing?
We could, but I don't know, it's still a weight thing, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't matter. I mean, if if you got an eighty thousand pound rig going on, a forty ton rig going over it, it doesn't matter if you're pulling five miles an hour or.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
I'd rather be going faster.
Like you're, like you're, like just. That, yeah, like we am, but at least that's more right.
We'll we'll keep patching it back to keep the rising, but it's it's still a weight issue.
But we think the beams underneath are all right, you know?
Well, it's, they haven't changed, but anyway.
So the new bridge is to maintenance, to be able to handle all the weight.
Yeah, the real bridge, yeah, real bridge. Yeah, for no restriction at all.
I don't think, yeah, a lot of it's heavy, no guardrails, so it'll be one option, see, decent, barely know what's there.
Yeah, it's needed to be replaced for a while, but it's like anything, like you said, it's just a matter of, you get a.
Right.
We've been talking about this for four years, and if you get a bridge with a pipeline, and it just takes forever to get it replaced.
I did hope we don't have an incident, that's, you know.
I'm also hoping that the market settles down a little bit for prices.
Right. I don't think it will.
No, heard on the news last night, there's a shortage of cement, or, yeah, cement.
I'm glad we did Ramsey three when we did.
Yeah, that turned out good, right? Actually, I'm lucky enough to have that.
I did get a couple questions, when I was up there at that Mackey sale, looking at that stuff and people, and, yeah, we hit it at the right time. Way better than just doing it this spring, that would have worked for a lot of people.
Yeah, we had, like we said, a slight cost overrun is not, is reasonable comparatively to, like I said, with the runway project was over by like almost double, and, I mean, the cost of things is just escalating so crazy that we got it done at the right time.
I was probably due to cement, I, oh, yeah.
Yeah, because they do that, they do cement on all the runway scrap, yeah.
I was, I got a vessel too.
Back ground.
Yeah.
It really looks good too. It really looks good too.
Yeah.
You drive way too fast.
It's a long trailer.
We put rumble strips on where you meet highway seventeen and that's a great improvement, I don't know, it's kind of a blind stop sign there for whatever reason, I don't.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
It's got that little kinda like crest take thing where you come over that little, little, it's been a while since I've been.
Like, why those rumble strips, that was a, that was a.
Scared the heck out of you.
Alright. The Craig's dust control, put our groundwater down, that got, all got done, so the bill for that was, uh, twelve thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents, and then we collected twenty-five percent of that from the owners that live nearby, so. We'll get through.
Okay, motion to second to pay Craig's dust control for groundwater. Further discussion. See, no, no, we're, we're actually paying it, roll call please, sorry.
Volk.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Decep, aye. Light one.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh, close construction did get the, uh, Cray Roadall gravel down, so that's done, and the invoice for that was fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Motion to pay that.
Motion to pay.
Sorry.
Okay. A motion to second to pay close construction for the Cray, uh, Cray Road gravel project. Further discussion. See, none, roll call please.
Brett.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Decep, aye. Light one.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh, K L J had a invoice for the inspection. They did a, a paving project on Ramsey three. That was fifty thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents, so. Motion to pay that.
So. Sorry.
Yeah, motion to second to pay K L J, uh, for uh, inspection engineering on the, uh, project on Ramsey three A, uh, further discussion on the motion. Here, none, roll call please.
Decep, aye. Brett.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Decep, oh, light one.
Aye. I'm ready to listen. Well, at least.
Uh, we did get the three new rakes for the three new motor graders from Martin's Welding and Machine. And that was seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty for all three of them and that's, I don't know if you guys have heard any comments about those, but that's one of the better things we've ever purchased. Even the guys at Operaum said we should have had these years ago, so what does the rake do? It, you know, well, like this time of year when they're rolling their ditches and all that grass comes up out of the road. And, and these rakes will shove it back down in a ditch, so it's.
Tilted sideways and then they kinda get the guy jobs so you can cut real nice along the corner, along the edge of the.
One of the reasons I, I asked is because I had an individual contact, me, and was wondering why they weren't cutting the grass on the ditch and pulling the gravel back up, I said, well, that's usually a spring thing, right? And then the township usually asks for that, correct?
Right.
And that's what I said, so you need to go to the township if you want that done in the spring to have, you let you know that they want that done, right?
Yeah, you don't want, you don't wanna do it at this time of the year too much because you all have a bunch of.
It was just a question asked and they didn't realize that they have to ask township to have you do that, I said, we're not just gonna go out we, I, when I was a kid, we used to call it farming, the road in the spring, you know, if they want that done, they have to ask the township to ask. And I left it known, and they were cool about it, they just were curious of why.
Some people actually hate it when that happens, so, you know, it's a thing where you, we want them to request it, so they're say, yeah, we need this.
Well, then they can tell their patrons that they requested it, you know?
Yeah, and if they don't like that in the spring too, you can use the road reclaimer first and then pull them. So that reclaimer did a really nice job, but they did some of that, I looked on the fox, they drove right north of me and that did a really nice job, but then they pulled edges back in and it.
I liked it, it seemed like it wiped the road back though, you know the grass over time.
Yeah, well, you're always gonna have gravel on those edges, just move it back and forth.
Even the graphic, yeah.
Yeah, it, it worked really well.
Yeah, we had the rates from Martin Welding and they were seventeen thousand three twenty-five. We approve.
Okay, there's a motion to second to pay Martin Welding for the three new rates for the motor graders. Further discussion on the motion. Here, none, roll call please.
Volk.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Decep, aye. Brown.
Aye.
Light one.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh, the gravel truck that we took over to East Grab Forks to get fixed, Nelson International, the bill on that was four thousand two hundred and eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Some kind of a sensor in the, uh, regen process. We haven't what you got yet, but it's done.
I do have one question on that, was there a reason why we took it to international and not parade truck?
We took it to parade truck and they diagnosed it for us and they were actually scared to do.
Okay.
Ask that, I do it, I mean, how do I say this without?
No one, and that, that's cool, I just wanna make sure that we use locally for.
Yeah.
Truck is fairly new, right?
They recommended that we take it.
Awesome, yep, and then I just wanted to make sure that we just didn't take off out of the.
Be a computer, I'm sure.
Yeah, once you get into, yeah, once you get into specific things, then you almost wanna take it to the place where it's a dealership.
Right, to be quite honest, you don't want us to put the parts into it.
Oh, yeah, that's fair enough, yeah, that's fair enough.
Don't wanna guess.
Well, I suppose every specific dealership has the technology specific to those type of things to be able to diagnose better.
Exactly right. And that, that, that technology is constantly changing, so for us, then they keep up with that, it's not a cost.
Like you said, they can do a basic diagnosis and say, this is where the problem is, but we can't, we can't, we can't whittle it down to a specific part, yeah. It's good of them to be, to not just start chasing it too and to tell us, hey, this is, yeah, be honest with you, it's a good thing.
Big expense of those computers.
Oil.
A lot of now different computer for trucks and combines and.
Yeah, all that regen stuff is, yeah, all that regen stuff is, yeah, it's expensive, it's expensive. Okay, I guess we need a motion to pay for that then.
Motion to move.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion to second to pay Nelson International, uh, to, for fixing the truck. Further discussion. Here, none, roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Decep, aye. Light one.
Aye.
Well, this is a heads up for a while back, we, well, one hour before, one of our older trucks wasn't shipped in the transmission. Then we had it off the Butler and they couldn't figure out what was wrong, nobody could figure out what was wrong, we finally diagnosed it ourselves. The batteries have to be at a certain level before the transmission will shift. So I would sit for a couple, three days and the batteries would drain just a little, but it's still starting and everything, but yeah, there wasn't enough battery juice to ship that transmission. So, I mean.
Yep, what was this car?
It was one of our automatic pot trucks.
Really?
And we had it everywhere, trying to get it, figure out why was this like.
That's the one with Allison's, right?
Yep, Allison automatics.
Same, we have same issues.
Uh, just didn't have enough battery juice in the batteries, uh.
So when you start it up, it won't go, but you just have, you can let it idle on the alternator or take the batteries up and then it'll.
Well, it takes forever for the alternator.
It just takes forever.
So we got, we actually put one of those, uh, little chargers that you plug in at night and.
A tender.
A tender.
Keep, keep it.
Works fine. I'm telling you, this technology stuff is just great.
Well, there's, I've been talking about that with other people, that, you know, you're looking at like auction sales now, there's a lot of these late nineties to early two thousand tractors and stuff like that, that are going for huge money because people are getting into the new stuff and the technology is just it's just getting so expensive to fix things and stuff that guys are going back to, you can put a cotter key in it, go to work. You know, like, there's huge money and you stick in good quality, older model tractor.
Okay, uh, next, we got some, uh, culverts from New True North Steel, uh, mostly for resale. Uh, they were forty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-two cents, uh, do you motion to pay them?
We approve.
Second.
Okay, motion to second to pay True North Steel for culverts who resale. Further discussion. See, none, roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Decep, aye. Light one.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh, two more to add, we got bird harvesting fixed, two more, uh, penal sites for us. On the bridge sites, uh, that, the two sites together were four thousand thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. So, we have a motion to pay for those two sites, so.
Second.
Okay, motion to second to pay bird harvesting for fixing some roads for us. Further discussion. Here, none, roll call please.
Brett.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Decep, aye. Brown.
Aye.
Light one.
Aye, motion carries.
And since we got done with our subs, fixing our saw spots, we took our rental, Skid steer rental back to Ironhead Equipment and the cost on that was four thousand twelve dollars and thirty-eight cents, so we have a motion to pay that.
We'll approve.
Okay, motion to, uh, motion to second to pay for the Skid steer rental to Ironhead, correct? Okay, further discussion on that. Here, none, roll call please.
Decep, aye. Brown.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Light one.
Aye, motion carries.
That's all I have for bills, and only one other thing, just to bring your attention, uh, Gary Fenner's gonna be, be retiring in November, so I haven't even talked to Brian about this yet, but probably advertising like towards the end of this month sometime for help, just to get somebody in place.
Forty years this period have been.
Uh, close to thirty, not quite twenty.
A long, a long time.
That's just started with her, yeah.
Uh, that's just warm my head up, maybe thanks to see the ad in the paper or somebody else or whatever, we don't know.
Good employee, you know? Congratulations, Sam, good everything.
That's all I have.
Alright, anything else for Kevin?
I have one thing for Kevin, uh, I was with Peterson, we did that culvert you guys put in, we put some rock over it. Would it be possible to get some gravel put in there and just blade that road?
Sure.
Now that we, now it's holding, you know, before it was settling, now they put like some, I don't know, like, apic rock in it. If you just put gravel over that, so it don't blow that rock out, and then just blade the whole thing if you could, that'd be great, if you guys could do that.
Sure.
That way we can get it all to settle off a little bit. I appreciate it.
Right, maybe we'll wait for some moisture, but yeah.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, if we get rain, then we could.
They just asked because of the rock in there and when they had the rodeo and stuff, like, bam, it really.
I don't, good, okay.
Okay, good deal. Alright, very good, thanks Kevin.
One other thing, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
The, when the, um, bike path was put in, did you have anything to do with that as far as, oh, by the golf course?
Uh, that was a county project, but, uh, I think the township just helped us do the maintenance on.
Okay, so the maintaining would be to contact the township or?
Uh, no, we, we, it's probably due for another seal, seal code, but it's something that comes up about every six years, about the time we seal one, our Ramsey twenty-one, it's a totally different type of seal, we can't use the same contractor type of thing, but.
I just had, uh, two or three patrons ask me about it, who maintains it, but I don't know, it's something I'll be checking out.
No, it's kind of a shared thing, even the parks and recs will use their, uh, stuff, move the snow off it, then they got.
That's what Terry said, that they use, usually push the snow off of, and I was just curious of who maintains it. Just because I got the question asked, I didn't know if it's something we.
It's really a shared thing, I mean, but, nothing is right anymore.
So who ramrod, is it you ramrodded that or?
When we do the seal project, I, I accept that.
What they want, what did they want done?
A ceiling, because they're, they're getting cracks in it, I think they're concerned that they don't want it to go beyond that, so the cost of ton of money.
Right. It's about there now, so we should have probably, I didn't put it on my twenty-three budget, but, my twenty-three, but we should probably hook it doing that soon.
I do know how it was done, half candy and candy.
Well, it's in our right of way, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, we've had to approve changes to it the past when we've had people put, uh,
benches.
Yeah, any kind of things that have happened to it, so.
And just curious, did some people have put, have just put driveways across it?
Yeah.
Legit or?
It actually helps.
Driveways across it, so now I think it's doing this number, or is that something we should be concerned about?
There's a big transition there, I haven't looked at it, it's something.
They just, they just had this done, so.
Yeah, we approved putting in a approach across it in one spot.
Right. Now, the pavement approach, that's what we started.
That's the approach up there, okay.
Payment that goes over the top, they cut it back, I haven't looked at it, I haven't either, it's just, I was, brought my attentions.
It's on the table again.
Yeah.
That's all, I promise.
It's okay, I like questions, I love it. It's, it's good, it's good to learn. Okay, very good, thanks Kevin. Okay, new business, Homestead Credits.
Move it through.
Second.
Yeah, motion to second to approve both Homestead Credit. Further discussion. Here, none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side. Motion carries, excuse me, uh, anti-perse discussion, um, I guess we could preface it since it's on the agenda and it doesn't have a lot of context. Uh, we put this on, uh, meeting following last meeting's executive session to discuss, uh, uh, this anti-perse issue that we have had put in front of us. Um, I guess we, we decided we needed a couple weeks just to kinda think about it, basically at that point. Uh, any discussion on it or anything to add, Ryan?
Yes, yes, you guys got the information.
Yeah, we got the information to talk about it.
We just move forward if, uh,
okay.
Yeah, just turn it over now. Just take it over.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to then declare the employee, a twenty-twenty employee, and forward the paperwork per se to make a determination on payment then. Okay. So we have a motion in a second, that works for motion in a second there, basically, I said. Okay, further discussion on that motion then.
Do we need to be any more specific with that as far as dates or anything like that, or?
Good question.
Will they take care of that, will their?
Yeah.
I think they, when they look at that, they're gonna go back and.
So, yeah, so anti-perse will, um, you guys will make this determination, it's a twenty-twenty, that'll trigger for them to, um, we'll send them a payroll worksheet for that time period and they'll compound the interest and who, what's owed here, what's owed from the employee and employer, and we'll get that number and we pay it and we gotta figure out what to do with Mark, you know, how to, uh, work it out with Mark and to pay your portion, that's, that'll be the.
Or that should just be.
The scale that'll have to come from, you know, the commission, I suppose, too, but, um.
Because once they decide and then we come to the closure and then that's a done deal.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta, right of line. Per, per century toll or the guidelines of anti-perse or whatever, yeah.
Yep. Further discussion, questions?
Just one question about a little lot of, on, uh, her share, she paid her share, that's what we were told, is that correct?
She said that she would, yes, but there's been some question about that at some points through all this, in my one-year tenure here.
I don't think we can.
No, I don't think we can either.
Um, you know, we don't with anybody else.
No, I think she has to come up with her share because that's how it works, you put in.
Yeah.
And it's a matching thing, so it's, if you, if they don't put in, you can't put a match on.
Right, but this gets figured out, I would suggest you do it. County wants to have their check ready and she wants to put her money in there also, you know, this is final.
I think hers is gonna, in, say that she asked.
Well, anti-perse, yeah, anti-perse has said, first of all, one check will come from the county, they, it's not a separate one from her and a separate one from us. It'll be one check.[1750.74] It'll be one check, and they didn't care how she paid her portion to the county, if it was one lump sum, you wanna work out a payment plan, you, whatever you wanna do.
From her.
From her.
So we'll have to come up, once we get the numbers, we'll have to come to an agreement with her at that point on how to handle her portion.
Right.
Under the premise that we're gonna ask her to handle her portion, because we think we have to.
So you're thinking, we just deal with it then, when we find out?
Yeah.
We got, we gotta see what we're, what the dollar figures are gonna be.
What the number is.
Well, because they're gonna tell you what her portion would be and what our portion would be.
Right.
They're gonna give us those numbers.
Yeah, I, her portion, I think is gonna be, it's quite simple, I mean, it's just simple payroll numbers and a percentage, and it's roughly twenty-five thousand from my estimate, but our portion, you know, the compound interest over the years and that'll be interesting to see what our number ends up being. And again, Andy Perz was not gonna throw any numbers and tell you guys made that twenty twenty determination, and now we'll use the the minutes and forward those to them that you guys made that decision, and they'll start the calculation with the, with the payroll records.
Okay.
You're all ready with this, Candy?
Just be done.
The only way we can do it.
But I think it's some point then too, we'll have to, there, once they come with a determination, we'll have to look at too, if it's an option to do something with insurance or anything like that too, if it's an air and omission type thing, or we'll have, there's gonna be more discussion around this as we move forward about how it's gonna be paid for, but this is the first step in moving towards a conclusion and and make it, make it true, handle correctly, since it might happen, right, yeah, make it right.
And that was kind of the same way as to Andy Perz, it's just making it right, they, you know, make the determination, um it wasn't a twenty twenty employee in that timeframe, you know, that's your decision, if it's the twenty twenty decision, you know, that's your decision, so.
Yeah, and that's what we discussed in our meeting last week, or two weeks ago, so. Okay, further discussion on the motion then, or questions? Hearing none, all will call this one.
Deese. Aye. Volk.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, very good, thanks Brian. Uh prelim budget. Got mills sheeted in front of us and zero land use and total budget.
Do you wanna do special permit first?
Only wanna do special permit first and then talk budget, definitely.
Yeah, finish it off.
Moving on.
That's fine. Good call, Candy. We have a motion and a second to approve the special permit, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side. Yeah, we're done, that's all. Motion carries, okay, now we'll go with budget, uh as you can see in front of you, Candy, got the numbers from the state for the central centralized utilities and all that good stuff, um slight increase in value there year over year, um health insurance, we got back that, we, a couple days after that last meeting, and it's a two point three percent increase there, and then vision and dental were basically a wash up and down. So two point three percent cost of board increase there on the top loss cost and all that good stuff. So we're looking at preliminary budget number right now of uh going from ninety-nine point four four mills to a hundred and five point oh nine, uh with the mill valuation increase uh from sixty-six three ninety and change to sixty-eight eight oh one and change. Uh, so a total value or a total uh property tax budget increase locally from six point six million to seven point five million for a nine hundred two thousand nine seventy-eight increase. Which uh counts that two point five four percent on a mill value, but not, if not, that, you know, that's accounting for the fact that there's an increase in the mill value. So if we're talking overall budget increase, obviously it's more than two point five four percent, I don't know what the number will be, but. That's a big number, so.
Total budget overall increased a million.
It's about twelve percent total, but we're not talking the mill increase. So basically a fairly, fairly similar budget to last year, other than the fact that we have an increase in about what, five hundred thousand of that, plus his law, law enforcement center and and additional dollars in the law enforcement.
Sheriff.
Portion, sheriff's portion and all that kind of stuff, you know, state's attorney budget, that's, that's where the money's going. There's just no other way around it, the rest of it is just trying to take care of our employees. Uh you know, a-again, like we've always talked about, we all know this, but for people, if there's anybody watching out there, we can set, we set the preliminary budget, and then we can always move backwards from the preliminary budget, but off of this prelim budget, that is what the tax estimates go out at.
Yeah.
So it's nice to get it as close as we can, so that we don't get people.
And it is, because those people come back.
Yes. Cause it's kind of confusing, yeah.
Or they're nuts, and we have people that are trying to prepay because they're leaving for the winter.
Oh, yeah.
So if we can get it really close.
Yeah. And thinking about it, the the only place to me where we can maybe save something is if we, if we maybe pulled some one-time expenditures or something of that nature, or tried to offset it with some uh, you know, if we had a little bit of COVID money or something, but I I don't know how, I don't know how we're gonna get much lower off of unless we either decide we're going to move off the wage number, or we, I don't know, law enforcement center's gonna cost what law enforcement center costs, so, I don't know.
I do have a question on the the wage stuff, I know we agreed to like a four percent.
Yep.
But I have kind of a, we did a four percent plus a step.
Correct.
My question is, I'm not a hundred percent tracking on how the steps work, but are the steps supposed to be on performance?
Yes.
So we're basically given a four percent because of living costs.
Yes.
So we're just giving a step? Wasn't that, the the step should be on our performance?
The step is all based on the performance on the department head.
Okay.
So we're, we're allowing for the possibility of a step, but that all depends on the depart- department head reviewing those employees every year, yeah.
So I just wanna make sure I'm tracking that, if they, if they go and evaluate an employee and they feel they're not ready for the step, it's just not an automatic thing.
No.
Okay, we're just giving that off, cause you know, I asked, got asked that question.
Yes.
Are we just allowing, oh, you're just getting a step increase, and you haven't earned it, you're a new employee, you just automatically get a step increase, you know? Cause that was a question I got, and I said, I don't know, I have to ask that question, because I'm not tracking, and I understand that four percent is because of living costs. And I know some people are maxed out on steps, because they've been here for a long time, whatever, I just don't wanna, for a new employee, all of a sudden they're moved up so fast and now they're maxed out at age thirty, let's say, just using an example, and then they're the ones that are coming in here, well, you know, my step is maxed out and I can't get any more besides the living cost. We don't wanna move that on so fast that.
Well, our, our step structure right now is spread out to what, thirty? Twenty-five? So if you started year one here and, and you started, say we started even yet, because you had experience when you came in, you started at a seven or something, it's gonna take you eighteen years of employment with positive reviews to get to that top end of the scale. So that's the point.
And that's the whole point of the step system, so we don't get that compression.
That's the point of the step system, so we don't get that compression.
You still give a good performance.
Yes.
For the, the community, basically.
Yeah, and the steps, so not everyone's gonna get the same raise, so like if you're capped on the steps, you're gonna get the four percent cost of living. If you're on the bottom end of the steps, the steps are structured so that we can catch up people on the low end of the wage scale to the median number, and then once you get to the median number, it actually slows down just a little bit, so.
And the reason I ask is, you know, we're doing this survey, so that step is like that, we were probably gonna come in at the, we're.
Hypothetically, yes.
You know, I, I just wanna make sure that.
Well, the step structure.
Understanding and the public's understanding that it's just not, okay, we're gonna do it.
No, no, I mean, I I I guess basically my thought has always been, we're allowing the possibility of the step.
I'm tracking.
Plus the fourth, uh but that all depends on, you know, and and there's structures as well in our employee handbook where if you don't get the step immediately, then you get a performance plan type of thing, and then after, was it three months, or six months? Depends on the plan, but then you can say, hey, we need to see this improvement, if we see it over this next timeframe, then you get the step retroactive, and if not, then you might just skip that year.
Yeah, I'm for some degree, I just wanna make sure that the public understands.
Yeah, and I, and I, I agree, for the camera, for everyone out there that was watching, that's how that structure works, and it, to me, it makes a lot of sense, just because, like you said, it's incentivized. The four percent, we're just trying to keep up with.
Yep.
The cost of revenue, which, you know.
So is the new survey gonna have more steps?
We don't.
I mean, is it, we don't know that?
We won't know that, but that, that.
I think they're gonna give us a baseline, and you know, the the salary structure in terms of the cost, and then I think we're gonna at that point have to, I'm not talking to Brian, but I think we're gonna, I guess I won't be here anymore, but for the likely, but you guys have to make a determination then on, do you wanna keep it at twenty-five steps, do you wanna try to stretch it? I mean, I guess, just my opinion, but, you know, we've got a lot of really good long-term employees, so maybe stretching, I mean, we've stretched it once since I've been here from twenty, I think, to twenty-five, and make sure we can take care of people, it might be worthwhile to stretch it again, but that's something that you're gonna have to look at.
And on the other end, there has to be a cap eventually.
Well, eventually, yes, the, the whole thought process would be, I think, if you stretch it out on the top end, you would just be basically saying, we're gonna give an extra half percent or whatever on each of those five years, so it's not gonna make a drastic difference.
I couldn't, I couldn't say a cap. You would be capped on the step, but you won't be capped on.
You'd still get consequences, yeah.
Cost of living.
But the whole point is, you know, when you have long-term quality employees, you don't wanna, you know, but yeah, you have to limit them per job description as well, you can't just
Yeah.
Keep jacking the price up on a job description either, but if an extra half percent for five years only gets a two and a half percent on top end of it, that's reasonable.
Basically, the way I understand the survey, is they're going in there evaluating each position
Correct.
to see where that value is on the civilian side and other counties, that's the way I understand it, cause that's the way ours works, by per uh per job, you know?
Yep, per job description, and that's why they're working on specific job descriptions, so they can match up to other entities and say.
And that's why it takes so long.
Yeah, because we might be asking.
And it's kind of hard too, when you think about it, because we have some offices that in a different county do different things.
Yeah. Yep.
You know, Ramsey County, we do this, well, we may go to Walsh, and they don't do that, the federal office, they, you know, so that's really hard to compare county to county.
Oh, right. Yep. Exactly.
That's why I'm hoping that the survey team's looking at the, not just counties, they're probably looking at the civilian side.
Yes. Okay. Well, and they're gonna look at comparable city type, you know, different governmental entities, and they're gonna look at a broad spectrum, I'm sure.
Exactly.
And maybe how many people work in each office.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, because we, you know, we're, we're streamlined really tight here for
Okay.
With a lot of, a lot of one and a half or two, two and a half person offices, so there's a lot of responsibilities that go on each individual, so
Between the auditors and the rest of the staff.
you know, they, they should be compensated accordingly, for the amount of work you're doing, is is the hope.
And it works, we have, it works.
Yeah.
But we have to make a schedule.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
Very, very scheduled.
Like you said, Candy, when you started, how many people were in the auditorium?
One, two, three, four, five.
So five, and we're down to two and a half.
Oh.
Or, yeah, two and a half, you know, you're saying one and a half on the trackers.
Yep, and previously started out with, there was four of us.
So I mean. Yeah, so I mean, that's
But we're automated right now.
Because of the automation, it's a pretty good thing for your buck that the county actually, the citizens get, I mean, for the amount of work that gets put out for one and a half or two and a half people, that's pretty, that's pretty, but, but.
Yeah.
So.
You know, big budgets and roads, but you started cutting roads and.
I don't know where I ever cut them.
Yeah. Well, yeah, my, my only question would be is, we're not, and we can't, obviously, we don't know if the prairie dog money is gonna show up or not, but can we account for that portion of that? Or, you know, cause we know we're gonna get paid a portion of it, we don't have that included in the budget anywhere, correct?
No, we don't, but it looks like we are gonna get it, but it looks not in the budget.
Morton, Morton was on the radio this morning, he said it's coming.
My thought there is, we should let that, uh having a balance in the fund and then spend the balance, I think.
Okay.
Well, it's not guaranteed, it's.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I care, I, I agree, that, that's kind of the problem with how the structure of it is, is that we don't know if we're gonna get it till after we're budgeted, if we knew already, we could account for it in the.
We make it those three months earlier.
Yeah, well, and we might, we might know by October, when we have to finalize the budget, if we're gonna get it for sure, well, at that point, then we can maybe pull the budget down a little bit accordingly, if we get that prairie dog funding. Which it's looking good right now, but I just keep, I know things could fall out of bed tomorrow, you never know.
I just know that we've been stretching every year, you know, tack, go up, tack, go up. Where we start not stretching the people thin, you know, with the economy the way it is, I know it's not huge, but you know, with the community, the things that the community is trying to do, and make a best for the community too, you know? The economy is what's hurt us, not. Exactly, it's killing us, and
Well.
All day across, because everything's expensive, everything that you put in is double the price, if that wouldn't have happened, we'd great, we'd be in great shape.
Well, I guess I look at it from this, I, I, I agree, we wanna try to keep best thing for our buck as we can get, but if you look at an equalized mill value from now versus seven or eight years ago, our taxes are lower than they were.
Yep.
And you have to think about it from the process of a dollar today is what, seventy-five cents was worth eight cent, eight years ago. So back then, we were at a hundred and forty-something mills, and now we're looking at one oh five.
Yep.
So we're actually in pretty good shape comparatively mostly, thank, thanking the state legislators for taking social services costs and putting it into the state.
Yes.
Because without them, we'd be at a hundred and fifty mills right now.
Right.
Plain and simple.
And, and hopefully, one day we can get help with uh law, with law enforcement.
That would be a hope too.
Yeah, you know, let's say they would even do half, we'd be, that would be huge.
All of a sudden, we, we'd take a million bucks off the top of our budget.
Yeah.
And that's, that's always the thing that frustrates me when we budget, we have to be as you know, as careful as we can, but we have to provide the services necessary, the government is basically the other function, but at the same point, I always look at it as an opportunity cost. We spend, and we have to fund the law enforcement center, but there's, if, if we had those additional million dollars, what could we do with them? Increase our road budget or something to make our roads a little bit better in certain spots, or, you know, spend some money here or there to do something that maybe we'd like to get done. But we just keep pushing up and pushing up, cause we just are always trying to keep a, a reasonable number in place, and that's where it gets frustrating, I think, at least in my mind.
Pretty long of this play.
Yeah, and we've got those ARPA funds that are gonna help offset some of those things, like the generator and things like that, so that's gonna be helpful, we can make an investment hopefully in our facilities, you know? On some of the things we talked about, Roger was in here previously, and we should be able to cover those things out of those ARPA dollars, which is nice. But, I mean.
But to the stuff that's mandated by the state trickles down.
Yes.
So even though you condensed your office, then you're doing more.
Oh, I know.
Correct. Yeah.
That's what you feel, I think.
Yeah, you know, yeah, some days.
Well, and it's, everybody's the same way from that perspective, I mean, you talk to the states, and trying to, and the, the state keeps pushing stuff off on this, you know, juvenile things and stuff like that, where they have to distract way more than they, they had to ten years ago, I mean, do way more things, I mean, it's just it's the constant battle, unfortunately.
We just keep asking, we hope this week we can do a little help. You know, I, I don't know, I mean, Jeff was showing an article that.
Morton County.
Morton County's in the same situation.
I think we all are, anybody that, any, well, all of us have jails, anybody that has a population center like we are, I mean, it's, it's a simple, simple fact, where there are people crime and things of such nature happen.
This is a stable, yeah.
Crime and violence.
Because if there's nothing to, nothing to do a crime with someplace in the middle of nowhere, you're gonna come where the people are in this, and we're a community, we're a hub. So something like uh, something like the law enforcement center, which is a necessity, costs more money for us because we're a hub community. I mean, I, I said it yesterday when I was talking with Derek, aren't I thinking about? The, it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense that an equalized mill cost, if you're a farmer in North Ramsey County, and you farm on the Cavler County side, and you farm on the Ramsey County side, your tax bill is higher on the Ramsey County side, because the, the hub community just happens to have, sit in Ramsey County, and it was the same way with social services. Your tax bill was quite a bit higher, because the hub community is here comparatively to, you know, we just have more costs than probably the local does.
I think Cavler County has higher valuation than us.
Yeah. That is wrong.
So, so they get more taxes than what we do, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's about, the concept of taxation and property taxes is an equalization structure across the state, you know, and it's never gonna be perfect, but as an example, you're probably right, but that's.
I've got some farmers, I always say that, they'd rather pay here.
Fuck, for us, we're doing good there.
I know, the Cavler there, so I was like, yeah.
Well, it's just like the talk that's going on about regional medical issues we're having in this area, and they're using the figure of twenty-five thousand for population, because in, in the region we need medical facilities, well, we have twelve thousand, we have about half the population in our town, but look at the other areas, they're coming in and using our town, our.
Our pushes, it probably pushes us to that twenty-five thousand.
Oh, yeah, our trade area is that much.
We're, you know, we need law enforcement for twenty-five thousand.
Really?
You know, we have to furnish that, you know, when they came here.
Yeah, it's a good point.
So.
Well, one of the basic tenants of government, I mean, it's, government has to provide things like fire protection and, and police protection and things. Well, one of the basic tenants of government, I mean, it's, government has to provide things like fire protection and and police protection and things like that, because it's not gonna be done permanently. So that's one of the things we do, roads and and safety, for the basic stuff.
And what are the things, we're not drawing taxes off, it's the lake bottom. When it lands underwater, we don't get that much from that. We used to, but we don't now, so that adds up too.
It's.
Compared to Cavalier County, they don't have lake bottom up there, they have lake bottom here. They're not drawing taxes.
They got their own set issues, and I always talk to Stan, like, taxable, they've got, uh, what's the forest classification because of the gorge, so none of that is taxable.
They did that.
Yeah, it's taxable, but very low rate, like extremely low rate, and there's people that, you know, are gaining income off of that through rentals and stuff, and they're not paying any proper, very low property taxes. He's always like, it's, it's, it's kind of their issues too, because the gorge is, is, I can't remember what the class, we have some in Ramsey County too.
Forest stewardship.
Forest stewardship, yes, it's a state program.
And they threw out the figure of twenty-five thousand for each of the population now that we're gonna serve medically. Well, that says, well, we're serving that twenty-five thousand with the law enforcement we have in our own county. So compared what we did paying for law enforcement and what we have to do in the future, it could have gone off, I'm not making excuses. But I don't think anybody wants to defund the police.
Well, it's not an excuse, it's it's an explanation.
Oh, yeah.
Plain and simple.
It's right there, sitting right, I mean, the truth is there.
Well.
I hope we get regional medical puts there, let me do it, we can get that a lot better.
I I think it's, in all honesty, kind of impressive that we keep our infrastructure and everything that we have in as good a shape in our county as we do considering the ongoing costs we have in things like law enforcement, just because since I've been on the commission, I think our jail bill has probably gone up three to fourfold, and sheriff costs have gone up, and state attorney's costs have gone up, and everything that goes around that, and we're still functioning fairly well. Overall, our, I mean, we have pretty good roads and, you know, we do, we do all right, considering.
You know, we thought it was horrible when the cost of, the law enforcement center went over a million.
Yeah.
It was one over two. And population went up some, but like I said, we gotta remember it's a regional law enforcement center.
Well, what's our, our local assesses, what, what do we, seven and a half under, under this budget? So what do we have here? So two point two. Sheriff's at about one point two, I don't know what the state attorney's at. Four hundred and fifty maybe? Three point four, three point eight five million between state attorney, sheriff, and law enforcement center of a seven and a half million dollar budget, so it's fifty percent of the budget. Is is picking people up and doing what we're doing, and that, like I said, that's the thing that frustrates me, is that everyone, I think, has good intent.
Yep.
They're doing their jobs as they're doing them, well, but we just, it's just a circle, and we just keep cycling and picking people up and setting them and then to back out, and and we don't provide, we just don't have the capabilities or the dollars to provide the services to try and to keep them from doing it again. And some, some people are never gonna want help, and some of them do, and they just don't know how to get out of it, and and we just can't provide those services, because we just, I mean, we just don't have the money to do it.
That were good, good figures there, I don't know, good points, and like, we just said, we're going back to, we're servicing the population of twenty-five thousand people that we're paying for here.
Fif- fifteen.
And I do a point three. I think that should be part of the sell to the legislators, right there. There's other regional facilities in the state, and the whole county's getting swapped with the whole wheel.
Yeah, well, we're down on the business market, that is definitely something we gotta try to.
And I.
Every one of them, just, you know.
Might not notice them.
It'd be, it'd be kind of curiosity to find out where some of these others are, are they at that fifty percent too? I bet you they are.
I'm sure some of them are.
Oh, yeah.
And some of it comes down to too, is, you know, valuation structure and things too, like, I don't even know what Cass County's mill is worth, but, or sixteen thousand.
No, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying that.
No, but just percentage of the total bill, yeah, it's.
I bet you they're.
I bet you we're, we're probably about as high as anybody, though, but there's plenty that are in the same boat we are, because, well, even look at, Grand Forks County's looking at putting an addition on their jail again, and they just, I don't know, this is a jail ten, ten years, something like that.
They just did, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So they built a big new jail, and they've, they gotta put a, they're looking at putting more money into, they're actually looking at home rules so they can do sales tax, kind of like Hurley County, so they could do expansion on the, on the jail, and Cass County, I think, did some expansion work on their jail with some of their ARPA funds, and we're all in the same boat, we're all fighting this battle.
I think, I think Cass just approved another fifty million for jail expansion.
Yeah, we're, we're all fighting the same battle, and.
But then again, they got more ARPA money, and that's who they're gonna use some of their ARPA money for.
Yeah. But again, it's, it's the, the problem of, you got the ARPA money, but god, you'd like to use it on something that's not putting people in a cell, but you have to, it's it's a necessity of of what we do.
It can't be why I left either.
Yeah, it can't be, it just can't be.
Well, the law enforcement center brought stuff in, you know, their director of their law enforcement and their business person. I mean, I learned more by listening to them on how grand you should set the law enforcement up than anybody I've ever listened to. They had figures, and it was very informative to me, and they really showed me what we should do here.
Well, I think.
And I'm sure they come again, because stuff in California is all the same.
I think the way that we're moving forward on jails is for the betterment of the county also. Seems like the last month is coming.
It's coming, it really is, I know we're getting a lot of dollars now, but I mean, it's, it's coming, if if Captain is good and got the number.
Steve was happy with it the other day, stopped, was happy with what was going on.
Really good. And I think it's gonna work fine.
Basically, we're just trying to get a motion up.
Well, unless we think we, unless we have, there's a place we can skip.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion if we can, so we'll, I mean.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Budget is approved.
Further discussion, questions, opinions, comments?
Well, I know it would be a one-time deal, but would there be an opportunity to take some of our savings and put towards general fund for next year? Because we do have some of those CDs that you mentioned, Lisa, that.
We do, um, you know, it's, that's all in, you know, look in our general, that's, that's where it's at. And it's not always general money, of course, when Kevin gets money in, you know, it's kind of one pot, so it goes in and, um.
Right. But like I said, it'd be a one-time deal, and then, and then we got to come back and get taxpayers the following year with additional stuff, so.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Well, and like I've talked.
Unless you see an improvement.
And we have two CDs coming out right now, in September.
Basically, you're in that one type thing, you're, you're banking on that the economy turns, like, honestly.
Yeah.
Or you do what we got in the budget now, and and if it turns, next year's a launch.
Yeah, like right now, for instance, we have, so what's our, next year's general fund budget is projected at.
Fifty-two mils.
Yeah.
Four dollars there?
Yeah, a dollar, which is like four point eight or something like that, general fund, can't remember, you have it on the sheet, I saw it.
Four, four point eight oh seven.
Yeah, four point eight oh seven. Right now, our balance at the end of July was one point one nine two million in the county general. So that's slightly past half year, so.
But you don't know how much we're gonna have to write out for law enforcement.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not like we're sitting on a bunch of additional dollars, you know.
Yeah, that is.
Right.
Yeah.
So what do we think we're gonna get for per yard?
No, excuse me, one point one two four.
Well, that's, that's right here.
Is it like rose? Oh, that's rose.
That's rose.
And we're deviating.
Basically, our funding, is that this one they projected?
We deviated a hundred and sixty-eight thousand in the past, we carried it back, so.
That one million, six ninety-one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
I just adjusted a little bit, that's close.
Right.
One million, six ninety-one, two seventy-four, that's per yard funding.
And, well, we should be getting some money back from FEMA, some of the projects that we.
That's. Yeah. Yeah, but that's four to five years out.
Well, we are saying the help. Yeah, we're trying to have hopefully an offset, so.
Morton was on the radio yesterday and this morning, they need to bring out a lot to get full.
Well, I.
I hope that they do.
What I think they're filling up is what Warner's projecting is because of the price of the barrel of oil.
Oh, yeah, the bill's moved, yeah.
Filling up faster than.
Yeah, as long as the oil price doesn't fall out of bed, I mean, because they always set a very conservative projection for the oil price, I think at like fifty-eight bucks a barrel or something, we're at
Yeah.
ninety something now, I haven't been tracking it very closely, but it was well over a hundred for quite a while, so.
Once you look at our liability report, and our health insurance.
Yeah.
That went up two, right, so.
It did, but this is what we have in the account.
Two percent. Oh.
To the, I mean, we.
Yeah, we've got money sitting in the health insurance account right now, where we could, we could hypothetically.
Now, it's, it's out, what we have to do, and even taking over what we need to do with social services, it's done okay.
Yeah.
You you don't wanna spend some money.
But one, one big year or one bad year.
No.
Yeah, I know, totally, that's gone, but I mean, when we stop revocating money out of.
And. Yeah. And we're based off of, what, what are we, what are we projecting twenty, twenty-five hundred a month, I can't remember, but, and we, and we self-insure that too, so
Yes.
we're only paying the stop-loss cost to to Blue Cross.
Right.
So, I mean, hypothetically, you could shorten yourself a little bit as, on the self-insurance side of things, pay the stop-loss cost.
Yeah.
But like you said, all of a sudden, if if you get a big year like we had like four or five years ago, maybe not, like three years ago, and we overspent by half a million bucks or something, and all of a sudden, you can get tight real quick too, especially when you've got a hundred and twenty employees on that number.
Well. And and this year, and this year, there were a lot of babies born, a lot.
You know what?
And and I mean, it's still.
I'm okay with paying for babies.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, it's. And I know.
I'm comfortable with this budget, really, no.
How about the state aid too, you know, state aid, we get and we divvy it out to the different entities, that was way back in ninety-seven that we had to run a breakout. You know, so you've got some of your counties now too that take that state aid in general funded. But I know there's some of those entities that are looking for that money also.
What do we get state aid again, I'm sure.
We get state aid every month, though, and that runs.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
Uh, well, for state aid for next year would be the one million, no, one million, one fourteen.
Well, that pays for part of the law enforcement center.
Yeah.
Alright.
But I know, yeah, I know now we've got state aid too, that you've got those entities on there, you got, you know, the buckets, you know, there's some fire districts on there, there's
One question, I mean.
jobs development, there's.
Ambulance.
No, no.
Ambulance is.
Okay, so we're in the market, you know.
Yeah, that's in the back of the.
There is township, and we do take an actual amount of township, because when we did that breakout in ninety-seven, they, they got, you know, so much.
Oh, yeah. Right, your state distribution. So where is our state aid distribution going currently? General funding it, or?
No, no, we, we cover, there's a formula.
Yeah, yeah.
And it covers all the different entities, and what's left goes into the general.
So what's usually left?
Um, about sixty thousand, sixty-five, depends on what we get for the month.
So we dole out the one point one, and then we get sixty thousand, and that's done then.
But you know, like last year, we got state aid that very early December, that put our general fund, I mean, it was still in the red, or in the black.
Pretty clear. Pretty.
I think it would have been in the red of the red, if we wanted that much state aid.
Yes, I think, I think the whole moral of the story here is that we're not running like some huge overages, I mean, we're, we're right on where we should be, and we try to budget accordingly.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, we're not banking.
No, we're not banking, we're not sitting out a bunch of money someplace, I wish we were, to a point.
And I would, like, with the state aid, I would keep it to, like, the different fire districts and stuff like that, but everything else, I don't know.
Well, and the thing is, we, we have a portion of this budget too, we haven't even, we haven't even talked about radios for fire districts and things like that, where they're gonna get the money from, and
Yeah.
the, the, the emergency manager as well, the sheriff, had money included in their budgets, but Kevin needs, gonna need radios at some point, and.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of expenses going forward that we, it's not, we don't have it off budget, but we just don't know how it's gonna work yet.
I think Prairie Dog money should buy some of the radio.
Well, it might, you can, if you can buy his, maybe.
Can you. Can you research for that?
Well, we use our local dollars to buy the radios and then offset it with the county Prairie Dog.
Yeah. Yeah, you're approved.
No.
I won't play the game.
It's got to be rules. Well, and I think that's where, we come up with the prelim budget like this, with the dollars that we're at, and if we do by October know we're getting some Prairie Dog funds, maybe we could back it down just slightly to get it more in line with where we were last year, with the, you know, with the assumption that we could, you know, backfill some of those local dollars to some of the Prairie Dog money.
But, you know, I had seen the preliminary law enforcement center, and you that this increase was, it just, it makes me sick kind of thing, but it's one of those necessary evils that, um, yeah.
Well, in all honesty, when Candy sent it out yesterday, I was kind of, I wouldn't say surprised pleasantly, but it was better than I thought it possibly could be, let's put it that way.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, because we, five hundred thousand or whatever increase on the law enforcement side, plus trying to take care of our employees, that's pretty much really total increase is, I mean. So, it's justifiable, at least in my mind, even if it is painful.
Right. Well, it's pain, painful, but, yeah.
But I think on, on our side, that you can't cut it. I don't know, can't, you can't cut it so thin, because you don't know what's gonna happen next year, you know.
Right. Well, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful.
You know. Yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, that, you know, it's, it's.
I guess I call for a question.
It's been reversed.
Do we know what our budget's going in for that estimate?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I'll for the question.
Okay, the question has been called, I like, this is prudimentarian stuff here, good times. The question has been called, uh, we have motion in a second for the preliminary budget to be approved, uh, so no further discussion, we will roll call this one, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
Desette, aye, Leifon.
Aye, and the preliminary budget has been approved, and motion carries.
Okay, budget's hearing date, um, will be September twentieth at nine AM.
Do we get a motion to accept that?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to designate Tuesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM, as the budget hearing date for the Ramsey County, for this budget year, for the county budget hearing.
And that's, that's the date that, um, Alan with District Health said that had asked us to change the time, because.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, and then, but we won't, we won't approve the budget fully until the first meeting in October, this is just the hearing date for the public to come and ask questions and.
Right, right. Yeah, it's to put out the tax, the estimate, the tax statements and.
Yes, and to concerns and questions and things of such nature.
Yeah.
Well, that, the timing actually.
Yeah, yeah, because the, he was having trouble organizing it with the other counties.
They usually do a first meeting in September, right?
But that's not enough days.
Yeah, it's not enough days.
Yeah, well, you can't, you can't submit, like, for the eighth, the seventh of September, so, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
All the mandates.
Yep, so we have a motion in a second to set that as the date for the discussion. Hearing done, all in favor, what I say, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Okay, crickets for visitors and delegations, anyone wants to talk to us, they'll probably want to talk to us on the twentieth of September. Portfolios, so what, what's your dissent?
Um, I don't have any portfolios.
Well, I know it's mid-stim, well, you got the Heritage Center, what's going on for Heritage Center?
Oh. I know. Oh, I know, um, actually, we don't have a meeting until next, what we see good, on this, Monday.
What's going on in your center about this? Okay.
Monday, we're gonna have that, and of course, our agenda is, they're gonna apply for some money through us, and they're all, because of the roof situation, um, it's a pretty small agenda, but, and they're all.
And they're all, because of the roof situation, um, it's a pretty small agenda, but, and they're also gonna have another puzzle get together. They have people.
I saw it was quite a few people there.
It was. It's, it's kind of bragging, right, to get this done within the two hours and.
Something fun.
Yeah.
A puzzle juke sound buzzer competition.
I would, I would do bad at that.
I would too, but anyway.
Bad situation. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Michelle Brown?
Yeah, we talked about jail and things are going pretty well there, so. And, uh, new jails are good.
Okay. Michelle Brett?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything other. I, you know, talked to Steve yesterday and he very hopeful that we'll have. Probably just about double of the employees on correction side of things that we did, you know, a month, six weeks ago. So looking at fourteen, thirteen, fourteen people coming on board, so, um, people that.
Obviously, yeah.
That have some CO training and.
Obviously, they have some experience.
Yep, and got some experience and they're gonna be having DOSR coming in this, sometime this month. And we're hopeful that we get their approval to go back up to a level one type of facility, um, sometime soon, so.
So does level one get us into black then?
Well, the level one would, would take away that ninety six hour.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but yeah.
We'll be able to hold people for a year or three sixty four and come down to trade them back.
Yeah, three sixty four and, you know.
So if you, if you pay.
Right, so we, we get back to that fifty, um, bed capacity that they had placed us on a year ago. And then hopefully at some point we can get back to increasing that number so we can get back to the black. What that number looks like is somewhere in that seventy five, eighty, um, prisoner capacity. I don't know if we necessarily need to be to a hundred or a hundred and three like the facility can hold. I think that puts a, an extreme strain on, on the facility and employees, so. And we're hoping that we can sometime within the next three to six months get back to a, a level one. And then maybe at some point we can get back to that, you know, sometime in that seventy to eighty prisoner capacity. Where we can be more self sufficient.
Well, I think that's a long term discussion that the law enforcement board has to have in terms of what, what, what are, what are the goals of the facility?
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
You know, like you said, maybe if you stay at eighty, we, we have less turnover with COs and it's not quite so stressful. And, and we can run the facility with a few outside prisoners, maybe to try to keep that balance. Yeah, long term discussion to have.
But I think it's moving in a, a very positive direction.
That's, that's positive. That's good.
Steve Hall's coming next week just for a walkthrough.
Yeah.
And I told him off that I wanted to be there when it gets done, so I'm gonna grab information from him.
Yeah, so they moving in a positive direction. I'm working in the airport and they're moving in a positive direction other than. And, you know, some of the cost overruns are gonna be expected, but, um, we may not have, may not have enough money. You know, even with the sixteen point eight that we received from the airport, um, you know, what we wanted to do with, uh, build an expansion. And, uh, really sad and unfortunate situation is our longtime engineer out there, you know, Brian Jacobson that passed away suddenly and unexpectedly. A couple of weeks ago and Brian's been working with us for a number of years. He was with K L J, uh, before separating one of me done. But Brian was, uh, what was he, forty nine years old?
Wow.
Forty nine?
Yeah, um, and so quite a shock to the staff, uh, that's been working with them, that's bored. Um, sad deal. Brian was one of those, one of those good guys that you, you had a pleasure meeting and, um. But moved on from there and, you know, we heard from Extension today and, uh, they have some great things going on. I think, uh, Lindsay and Sarah are doing a wonderful job up there. Yeah, we just keep on working with it, so.
Yeah, the, the amount of programming they turned out for that office being three and a half people is just.
Just amazing.
Just amazing the amount of programming they do for everyone. It's, it's impressive.
So very impressive. And that's all, all I really have, so.
Okay, thank you. Michelle Wolf?
Um, I met yesterday with Lake Access. They're doing some improvements out of Lakewood, fixing a lot out there. Had a little discussion with one of the tournaments they had. There was some rain delay and, um, public upset that it got clogged up. So they're gonna make some changes there, so hopefully take care of. I met with the Fair Board a week ago, last week. Um, the grants are starting to get to closure hopefully. Um, they're gonna do, uh, late September, early October, a fundraiser. And they got some plans on the four hundred club and things like that, so there's, it's moving on, but it's, it's work.
Yeah.
It's definitely work. They're finding out that it takes time. It doesn't happen overnight. But it is moving forward and it looks good so far. Hopefully we can get that. Hopefully we find out some information late October on the grant.
Well, yeah, that's gonna be a good portion of it.
Yeah, that's where I'm at. I wanna say they have three of them.
Good, good, good.
So we're waiting. Other than that, at least it's here. I'll have a member of the office, um, they're older, other than that, it's quiet out.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, for me, I don't have a pullout either. Uh, but I haven't been to social services in a couple of months since I was covering law enforcement center. Uh, but I think everything's pretty straightforward there, but, uh, be able to get there this month. Forward Devil's Lake, we just met yesterday. Um, got some good things going on there. Our, our NCPC, so North Central Planning Region, that's five or six counties, I can't remember. Um, part of the COVID dollars that came through, they have a million dollars worth of, uh, investment to do in our region. Uh, so Brad has been, I shouldn't say spearheading, but been one of the leaders of that with the economic developers in the other counties. Um, right now, they're looking at using five hundred and fifty thousand of it is gonna go to childcare facility grants. To help upgrade childcare, of which about three hundred and ninety of it is actually gonna be used right in Devil's Lake for childcare facility updates and grants. So we're gonna hopefully increase our childcare, uh, slots again. Uh, and, and we had a good discussion with A yesterday, and county and Devil's Lake in particular is actually one of the better places in the state for childcare slots. So we're doing really well in that and we're gonna have good investment, uh, in that, uh, amongst a couple of different facilities that are getting larger. As well as, uh, facilities that are already current and, and are just gonna do some updating, so that's gonna be great.
Great. If Candy, you're gonna beat it. There's a lot of babies.
Yeah, there's babies. We need some baby slots, right? That's okay. That's a good thing, because I think like they said yesterday, when a specialist talked, you come over there. Childcare is the industry that lets everybody else go to work, so we need, we need those childcare slots. And we're in pretty good shape in our, in our, uh, area, but it's always, it'd be nice to get a little bit better, so that's gonna be good. The other four hundred and fifty thousand of it, they're going to do a mobile, um, I can't remember the technical term. I don't wanna slaughter it. But essentially, they're gonna, uh, create a facility that they can move, uh, like a van type of situation. Where they'll go out to high schools and sell job development specific to our region and our community.
Got, got like the book boom deal that Brad was talking about.
To a point, yeah. And, and, but that's been approved now. Forward Devil's Lake had to make a commitment to a point. Uh, and at some point, the county might have to, uh, put a little bit more money in to, to meet that commitment. But it'll be very minor, like an extra twenty five hundred dollars or whatever from, from the county. But they're gonna try to do job development, which I think is, and it's gonna be targeted specific to jobs in our communities to try to keep kids here. So I think it's gonna be a good deal. We'll see how it works, but it's, we're trying something. So I guess they're trying something. I shouldn't say we, I was, I'm helping a little bit. Um, so from that, that's good. Uh, county housing authority, uh, HUD came in and did a, can't remember what the heck it's called. It's a REACT, I believe. It's, it's the inspection. We didn't do super well, but after going through the inspection reports and everything like that. They're very particular on very specific things. Uh, it was Tim's first time going through it. Uh, so, uh, we learned from it and we're hoping to get a little bit better next time to come back. But from the standpoint of the facilities, I think they, they get very, very particular on stuff like if you have a, a one inch lip on a piece of concrete or something like that. They'll knock you X amount of points and all this kind of stuff. And, uh, you know, it's, they're, they're just doing their job. But at the same point, those things do lead to some funding things, but I think we're gonna get that straightened out. It was the first, first one we've had like that, so we'll get it straightened out. Um, but other than that, everything over there is going really well. Uh, we actually got our, uh, vacancy rates are getting a little bit lower. We're getting more people into apartments and we're getting turnover a little bit bigger, so that's a good thing. Uh, and we're fully staffed, so that's been, been very good. Um, from a portfolio standpoint, within the courthouse and court facilities or, uh, county facilities, I don't have a whole lot actually. Everything's been going pretty well from what I can gather from visiting with people, so just moving along. So other than that, I think that's all I have for now. Any further announcements, discussion, anything like that? Trying to think if I have anything else to add.
Well, one thing I should probably mention, I don't know if you guys heard, FEMA is, uh, the rates are seventy five percent federal, ten percent state. And locals are fifteen percent, so for every damage type, we're paying fifteen percent. That's pretty typical. You have to hit another threshold of dollar, dollars before it goes to like ten percent or something like that. I don't typically hit that threshold, so. Local match is gonna be fifteen percent.
Okay. Well.
For the township ones, do they have to come up with that?
No, any township, schools, whoever.
The townships are gonna have to figure out a point. You have to share in there on some of their roots out there. Okay, very good. Further announcements? Hearing done. I'm not missing anything. We are done.